Ich bin Diane Frachter, Präsidentin der Woche der Wahlen dieses Jahres. Und ich bin wirklich dankbar für die Menschen. Als wir diese Idee zuerst erfunden haben, gab es eine Menge von offensiven Eindrücken über das Faktor, dass unsere Town Meeting nicht so gut geführt wurden wie wir hoffen. Und auch, dass viele Menschen, die an Town Meeting teilnehmen, nicht immer verstehen, wie bestimmte Regeln funktionieren und was der Unterschied zwischen einem Artikel und einer Botschaft ist. Alle Arten von Sprache, die die Menschen, die sehr gut mit all dem vereinbart sind, mit Sicherheit managen und nicht einmal realisieren, dass andere das nicht verstehen. Also, wie immer mit der Woche, versuchen wir, unsere Bürgerinnen und Bürger, unsere Legislaturleute, zu verstehen. Spezifisch möchte ich danken, unsere drei Redner. Anita Jack, die retirente Polizistin, wird helfen. Ari Maithari, unser Präsident in Konrad, und dann der Person, die alles andere kümmert, Michael Lawson. Andy, er ist in Japan, also ich bin sicher, dass die Leute denken. Wer weiß, ob er weiß, wann es ist?
Ich freue mich, euch alle einherzukommen. Wir freuen uns, euch heute Abend hier zu haben. Wie Diane sagte, ist dies der Anfang. Sie sagte vorher, wir hätten schon einen Anfang gehabt. In der letzten Monate mit einem Team von Moderatoren, drei Moderatoren von Konrad, zwei formalen und dann die Moderatorin Carla. Sie haben über die Art von Town Meeting gesprochen, ihre Geschichte und so weiter. Das war wirklich cool und sehr interessant. Wir belegen jetzt eine Reihe von drei Sitzungen. Dieser dieser Abend und dann zwei andere, ich werde sie in ein Minute sprechen. Alle Sorten dekomponierende Town Meeting. Also, der erste dieser Abend, vom Artikel zum Waren, das es ermöglicht. Dies wird über den Prozess sein, einen Artikel zu schaffen, der auf einen Waren sein könnte. Was du tun musst und was du aufmerksam machen musst. Und der zweite, wie es funktioniert und wie es funktioniert. Das wird im Januar, ich denke, ich werde die Moderatorin für diesen. Das ist ein "Alles klar, du hast einen Warenartikel, gut für dich, jetzt was machst du?" Also, es geht um deine Auffassung und was du tun solltest, um zu versichern, dass dein Warenartikel an die Town Meeting angekommen ist. Worauf你要投票, öffentliche Zuhörungen, wie du zu einem Auffassungstätig bist. Und dann der dritte, das wir heute vor der Town Meeting haben, ist ein Warenvorzug, für die Town Meeting 2018. Das wird von Carmen gemacht, wenn ich es richtig erinnere. Und das ist das, was an der Town Meeting passiert. Welche Regeln und wie es funktioniert. Ihr habt alle vorher dort gewesen, wenn jemand eine Frage stellt oder jemand eine Änderung hat. Und so etwas, wie es all das funktioniert. Wenn du dir den Publikum nimmst, ist es eine zweite Partei. Es gibt jemanden, der eine brillante Idee über einen Warenartikel hat, der vielleicht passieren könnte. Wie machst du das tatsächlich? Und dann für den Rest von uns, wir sind die Legislaturleute. Also, wir sollten verstehen, was dieser Legislaturprozess umgeht. Das ist das, was wir machen werden. "Mappin' the Road" zur Town Meeting. Ich denke, wir haben das gerade getan. Also, die Town Meeting dieses Jahr ist April 9 bis 12. Hoffentlich ist es April 9 bis 11. Aber wir werden sehen. Die Town Meeting ist ab 7 Uhr am 9. Und die Hochschule, wir haben noch nicht entschieden, aber wenn die Moderatorin ihre Willen hat, werden wir es wieder in der Gymnasium haben. Ich vermute, das wird es machen, weil es letztes Mal richtig lief. Die Town Meeting ist ein Gesetzgebiet der Stadt und die Bürgerinnen und Bürger sind die Legislaturleute. Also, alle registrierten Wahlen in der Stadt sind eligible für die Teilnahme. Und alle Punkte, die vor dem Gesetzgebiet kommen, sollen wir wählen. Wir haben keine Abstimmungs票. Also, wenn ihr den Wunsch hat, einen Zustand zu geben, oder nein, müsst ihr aufzeigen. Also, das ist ein schneller Einführung. Ich werde meine Kollegen übergeben, die heute die heilige Lüftung machen können. Ich werde dieses Präsentationen machen. Vielen Dank fürs Kommen.
Guten Abend, alle. Wir beginnen mit dem, was in deinem Paket ist. Hat jeder ein Paket bekommen? Okay, wir haben eine Liste von dem, was wir heute Nacht behandeln werden. Und dann die Handouts für die Slides, die einen Platz für Notizen haben, wenn ihr möchtet. Dann gibt es eine Handout, die, wenn Anita spricht, sie wird zu sprechen haben. Dies enthält eine Menge allgemeine Informationen. Es ist sehr nutzlich für die Verwendung der Town Meeting-Bildung. Es gibt ein Beispiel eines Warenartikels, über das Anita sprechen wird. Es gibt auch ein Brief vom Landesverwaltungspräsidenten, über die Town Meeting-Vorzug-Minute, die am 2. Dezember abgerufen werden. Es gibt das allerwichtigste Town Meeting und Wahlplan, das hat Grenzen. Es ist besonders wichtig für die Positionen. Und das letzte Stück ist die Komitee-Dokumentation. Also, was ist die große Idee? Die Town Meeting betrachtet eine Vielzahl von Themen, Ideen, Innovationen und standardisierte Hauswirtschaftsobjekte wie hieran Town Reports, die Town Meeting, die jährliche Town Budget, Konbalsationpläne usw. Das erlaubt der Stadt, in effektiver Regierung und zuständiger Spende zu reisen, wie von euch, dem lokalen Legislaturleuten. Einige Beispiele von einer Bedürfnisse. Im Jahr 1959, die jährliche Town Meeting hat die Gesetzgebung adoptiert, die ein Zutrittsgesetz für die Altersrettung zu schaffen, um Programme für die Altersrettung in Koordination mit Programmen des Massenzutretts der Altersrettung zu schaffen. Ein Beispiel für eine Lösung. Im März 1965, die Town Meeting hat die Planungsrat geeinigt, ein uniformes System der Hausnummerung durch die Stadt zu schaffen. Eine Initiative. Im Jahr 2015, die Plastikbodenreduktion-Gesetz. Ein Beispiel für Gemeinschaftskonsensus. Im März 1965, die Town Meeting hat unanlässlich die Resolution adoptiert, die die Bürgerinnen und Bürger von Konrad bedroht haben, dass Personale und Bürgerrechte in Alabama verletzt werden. Also, alle Sorten von Dingen kommen vor der Town Meeting. Diese Ideen, ich weiß nicht, warum das passiert ist. Ich lerne PowerPoint, also sorry für das. Diese Ideen fallen in drei Legislaturbereiche, die als Town Meeting-Beschäftigung betrachtet werden. Korporation determines, wie die Stadt Geld spenden wird und woher das Geld kommt. Regierung determines die lokalen Gesetze und Zoningmappen und lokale Optionen der Staatsgesetze, die die Stadt will adoptieren und umsetzen. Veränderungen im Charakter und auch einige Politiken. Und die Meinung der Meeting sind nicht bindende Wahlen, wie Resolutionen, die für etwas standen oder eine Wahl, die eine Grenzkomitee oder ein Department umsetzen oder ändern würde. Ich sage "umsetzen", weil die Town Meeting kein anderer Körper dazu führen kann, außer dem Gesetz. Also, wir sind hier, um zu sprechen, wie eine Idee ein Warenartikel wird. Also, wir beginnen mit der Idee. Also, die erste Frage, die man stellt, ist, ob die Town Meeting Jurispräsidien hat, als Gesetzgebiet, um die Sprache zu unterstützen, die Idee. Einige Beispiele sind hier, und sie sind in Legislatur, Fiskal und Natur. Ideen, die nicht die Town Meeting-Konzepte wären, sind Dinge wie Verkehrssachen und Regeln. Der Planungsrat handelt mit diesen. Oder Subdivisionssachen und Regeln, der Planungsrat handelt mit diesen. Also, es ist wichtig, die Unterscheidung zu kennen, ob es tatsächlich etwas ist, das die Town Meeting behandeln wird. Also, sagen wir, du hast eine Idee und du hast bestimmt, dass es eine Town Meeting-Idee ist. Was ist der nächste Schritt? Machen Sie etwas Recherche. Schauen Sie in andere Gemeinden, denn das wird Ihnen viel Zeit vorteilen. Chancen sind, dass jemand anders auch über deine Idee nachdenkt. Also, als du deine Idee entwickelst, sprich mit Menschen und Gruppen in der Stadt, die von deiner Idee beeinträchtigt würden, um ihre Input zu erhalten. Dies könnte eine Runde oder eine Komitee oder die Stadtstaat sein. Dieser Art von Input wird dir helfen, zu verstehen, welche praktischen oder rechtlichen Probleme bei der Umsetzung oder Umsetzung der Maßnahme, die du vorschläfst, entstehen können. Und online suchen Sie sie. Entdecken Sie, ob andere Gemeinden die Maßnahmen durchgeführt haben. Manchmal sind diese Gesetze direkt auf ihrem Website. Wenn Ihre Gesetze oder andere Maßnahmen durchgeführt wurden. Wenn du eine Idee für eine Gesetzgebung hast, kannst du auch auf die Website des Attentats schauen. Der Attentats spielt eine Rolle beim Akkordieren von allen Gesetzen, die durchgeführt werden, um sicherzustellen, dass sie nicht in Konflikt mit Staatsgesetzen sind. Also, wenn du eine Gesetzgebung von einer anderen Gemeinde anschaust und sie durchgeführt worden ist vom Attentatsamt, und die Stadt etwas sehr Ähnliches adoptiert, ist die Prozedur für den Attentatsrat, um es akkordieren, sehr stark. Und jetzt, Anita, können wir uns das in Schrift bringen?
Danke, Kari. Alles kommt leider auf die Wörter zurück. Und es ist wichtig, dass du die richtigen Wörter auswählst, wenn du wirklich dein Ziel erreichen willst. Und leider geben die Menschen nicht immer viel Gedanken vor, was sie wirklich tun wollen. Und manchmal ist es nicht erfolgreich. Also, ich würde empfehlen, wenn du die Aufgabe gegeben hast, ein Druckschild Warenartikel zu schreiben, dich selbst diese acht Fragen zu stellen. Was versuchst du wirklich zu erreichen? Wenn es einen Preis gibt, was wird es kosten? Und nicht nur vorher vorstellen. Versuchen Sie, zu finden, ob eine andere Gemeinde es gemacht hat. Machen Sie etwas Recherche, putzen mindestens eine Ballpark-Figur. Wer sind wirklich die Parteien involviert, in Bezug darauf, wer von deiner Idee profitieren wird oder die Regeln von deiner Idee beteiligt werden? Also, du hast eine Idee, wer die Spieler sein könnten. Du kannst antizipieren, ob du positive oder negative Reaktionen zu deiner Idee hast. Du willst nicht überrascht werden. Oh, ich hatte nicht erwartet, dass die Leute aufkommen und dagegenhalten würden. Also, es ist hilfreich, wenn du etwas vorher nachdenken kannst. Den Kattegesetz, wenn wir über das reden. Ich denke, der Proponent in diesem Fall hat wirklich nicht viel Gedanken gemacht, was von ihm beeinflusst werden könnte. Und sie war überrascht von der Opposition. Bewahren Sie unerwartete Konsequenzen. Und das ist der Grund, warum du wirklich darüber nachdenken musst. Wenn ich eine, sagen wir, Naturschutzressourcenkommission adoptiere, die Konrad's Verbraucherschutzkommission zuspricht, wenn sie alle Hunde auf Verbraucherschutzland geben wollen, und sie denken nicht daran, was das auf playgrounds und Erziehungsland haben könnte, dann sind die Hunde sofort auf den playgrounds. Und das wäre was, was ich als unerwarteter Konsequenz betrachten würde. Und als wir ein paar Jahre vorher unerfolgreich versucht haben, die Hundegesetz zu ändern, hatten wir ein Vielzahl von Parteien beteiligt. Der Zementarz-Komitee, der Erziehungskommission, der Naturschutzressourcenkommission und das Polizei-Department. Und wir waren alle beteiligt, und ich habe es ein bisschen koordiniert. Und wir haben gedacht, wir hätten alle gelöst. Wir hatten ein paar Zuhörungen und dachten, wir hätten Fragen behandelt. Was wir nicht antizipiert hatten, ist, dass die Zementarzwalken durchgeführt werden, weil sie wirklich still gewesen waren, bis zu dem Punkt. Und die Nacht der Town Meeting hat geschafft. Und alles andere war passiert, aber die Zementarzwalken oder Hundewalken waren nicht. Wer ist zuständig für die Behandlung? Wenn du über eine Gesetzgebung nachdenkst, musst du die Parteien einbringen und die Parteien beteiligen. Du kannst nicht einfach sagen, "Die Grenzbehörde ist dies zu umsetzen." Wenn du nicht einmal mit der Grenzbehörde gesprochen hast. Du kannst sortieren, wer für die Implementierung deiner Idee zuständig ist. Wer es umsetzt, das ist das Gleiche. Und wer hat es gemacht? Wie Kari sagte, reinke nicht die Kugel. Wahrscheinlich hat jemand in Massachusetts darüber nachgedacht. Oder jemand in der Land. Google ist fantastisch. Seitdem die meisten Städte Sachen auf ihrem Website stellen, wenn du es einfach googlest, erscheinen sie oft. Und das Landesverwaltungsamt hat Zugang zu einem Townfoot Network. Also, manchmal, wenn du wirklich gestoppt bist, du fragst Kari. In Bezug darauf, ob jemand etwas gemacht hat. Und antizipiere, wer dies unterstützen wird. So dass du weißt, wer du brauchst. Du musst einige Verbündete bekommen. Wir sprechen ein bisschen über ein paar Worte. Die Handout, die du hast, die heißt "Town Meeting Workshop: Mappin' the Road". Ich habe diese fünf Worte gelesen, gegebenenfalls Details in der. Aber dies ist nur eine Sorte der succincte Version. Und wahrscheinlich die ersten drei sind die, die die Menschen wirklich zusammengefasst haben. Diejenigen, die sie täglich benutzen, ich würde denken, die werden nicht zusammengefasst. Aber du wirst überrascht, wie viele Staatsvertreter wirklich nicht wissen, was zwischen einem Artikel und einer Botschaft ist. Aber ich hoffe, dass all Sie heute Nacht die Kenntnis davon kennen. Der Waren ist die Agenda. Dies ist eigentlich der Fincom Report, aber der Waren ist in dem Fincom Report. Es ist der, der dich an deine Hälfte sendet. Es ist die Warnung für alle, das ist der Ort, wo der Waren kommt. Die Warnung für alle, was kommt. Ein Artikel ist ein Agendaobjekt auf dem Waren. Und dies ist ein Nummer. Die Wahlräte entscheiden die Ordnung auf dem Waren. Also, ein Artikel ist die Warnung, was kommt. Und das wird dir generell einige Optionen geben. Wir werden durchführen, wie man es schreibt. Die Botschaft ist, was an der Town Meeting passiert. Und es wird sehr spezifisch sein. Es identifiziert die tatsächliche Gelder, die Quelle der Gelder, wer es umsetzen wird, ob es eine Gesetzgebung ist. Und es wird viel mehr definitives Sprache haben. Eine Änderung ist, das passiert an der Town Meeting. Wenn jemand seine Botschaft ändern will. Lory suggeriert etwas, und Diane wird an der Town Meeting aufstehen und sagen: "Ich möchte diese Worte ändern." Das ist eine Suggestion für einen Veränderung zu einer Botschaft, die bereits gemacht wurde. Und dann kann jeder das tun. Du musst es vorher diskutieren mit der Moderatorin, wenn du es nachdenkst. Oder mit der Stadtresourcenperson in der Town Council, die generell die Town Meeting fundiert, damit du die richtige Sprache erhältst. Und dann die Wahl. Und dies ist auf die Landesverwaltungspräsidentin und die Moderatorin zu stellen, worauf du eigentlich handeln willst. Der finale Ergebnis von dem Tag ist, ob du die Änderungen behandelt hast. Das ist, was am Ende aufgetreten ist. Ich kann es nicht genug erstatzen, reinke nicht die Kugel. Frag dich selbst, hat Konrad dieses Thema in der Vergangenheit behandelt? Die Menschen mögen nicht repetitive Artikel an Town Meeting. Ich denke, Wasserbottle. Fünfmal haben wir das mitgeteilt, und ich denke, der fünfte Mal haben die Menschen wirklich gefühlt. Und das ist genug. Es hätte vielleicht eine Chance, das fünfte Mal durchzusetzen, aber die Menschen wollten wirklich nicht darüber reden. Es waren fünfmal in der Zeit von vier Jahren. Wenn es in der Vergangenheit passiert ist, was passiert ist und warum es durchgeführt wurde oder fehlte? Denk darüber nach, bevor du einfach eine Gutmachtreaktion hast, "Ich will das machen." "Oh, das sollte durchgeführt haben." Es gab eine, die zurückging, aber es hat nur sieben Wahlen gefehlt, die letzte Mal. Also, sieben Wahlen waren sieben Wahlen. Und es bedeutete wirklich, dass nur eine halbe der Menschen in diesem Raum es nicht mögliche. Also, was willst du ändern? Das wird wirklich eine Unterschiede machen. Sieben?
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Ist es ein handy, dandy Referenzplatz, den wir nutzen können, um Vergangene Artikel und Resultate zu schauen?
Ein paar Plätze. Die Town Reports, jedes Jahr, wenn du weißt, dass es eine Dekade oder ein Jahr dauert. Wir haben ein paar hundert Jahre Wert von hier in der Bibliothek. In Bezug auf Minuten. Einfacher. Das Landesverwaltungsamt hat eine Datenbank, eine Town Meeting-Datenbank, mit der wir ein Wort machen können. Noch nicht, es ist seit 19 Jahren, es ist schwer zu vergessen, dass ich nicht hier bin. Es ist schwer zu erinnern, dass ich nicht hier bin. Aber Kari oder jemand in ihrem Büro kann ein Wortsuchen machen. Hunde oder etwas.
Das ist 1961, also es gibt eine Menge Information.
Und manchmal wird das gesperrt. Wir verwenden es oft. Zu diesem Punkt haben wir es nicht auf dem Website verfügbar. Vielleicht in einem Zeitpunkt in der Zukunft, aber es ist in Stillarbeit. Ich denke, wir gehen zurück zu dem, was sagst du, 61. Wir haben es in der Vergangenheit so langsam gemacht, in den letzten 10, 15 Jahren. Also, das ist eine Menge Information. Und dann kategorisieren. Also, du kannst ein Wortsuchen machen, du kannst eine Kategorisierung suchen. Und wieder, wir haben es nicht auf dem Website, aber das kann Karies' Büro helfen.
Wir können.
Also, konstruieren wir ein Warenartikel. Es gibt sieben Elemente. Erstens, du willst es einen Titel geben. Und ich würde empfehlen, den Titel succinct und relevant zu sein. Also, keine extranious Worte. Der Titel ist nicht Teil der Wahl. Also, es kann kurz sein, aber es muss relevant sein. Wenn du eine Gesetzgebung ändern willst, sagen wir, ändern wir die Zoninggesetzgebung. Frontage set back. Etwas succinct. Du willst nicht einfach sagen, "Frontage". Was du wirklich tust, ist, eine Zoninggesetzgebung zu ändern. Jedes Artikel beginnt mit der Phrase, um zu determinieren, ob die Stadt wählen wird. Und dann hältst du ein Verb. Ich habe in der 8. Klasse gelehrt. Ich bin in meiner Karriere inzwischen in Jobs. Also, ich habe den Englischlehrer nicht mehr. Also, ich habe viele people's Druckartikel neu geschrieben, um sicherzustellen, dass du einen Verb hältst. Was willst du der Town Meeting tun? Um Geld zu korrigieren, um eine Gesetzgebung zu adoptieren, um jemandem etwas zu autorisieren, etwas zu akzeptieren, etwas zu ändern. Also, du musst einen Verb hältst. Und dann willst du in die Sprache hineinfügen, was du versuchen willst. Also, du sagst, wenn du eine Gesetzgebung für XYZ adoptieren willst, du darfst die Sprache hineinfügen, was du tun willst. Wir hatten ein Problem mit dem ein paar Jahre vorher. 一个人, und ich glaube, es war das Wasserbottle. Die erste Mal, dass ein Wasserbottleartikel erschienen hat, hatte der Person nicht mit jemandem gesprochen, bevor sie es zur Town Meeting brachte. Und es sagte einfach, um eine Gesetzgebung zu adoptieren. Nein, es sagte nicht, um eine Gesetzgebung zu adoptieren. Es sagte, die Verkauf von Single-Syrup-Wasserbottlen in Konrad zu verboten. Es sagte nicht, es sei eine Gesetzgebung. Es sagte nicht, wer es umsetzen würde. Es sagte nicht, wie es umsetzen würde. Und es ist durchgeführt. Und dann am nächsten Tag sagte der Proponent, so, wann wird das beginnen? Well, was er durchgeführt hat, sagte nicht wann, nicht wie, nicht wer. Und ich wurde geordnet, es zu senden zum Attentatsrat. Und ich wusste sehr gut, dass es keine Gesetzgebung war. Aber ich habe es trotzdem geschickt. Der Attentatsrat ist nur zuständig für die Durchführung von Gesetzen. Aber ich habe es geschickt, und es kam fast sofort zurück. Wir haben keine Meinung darüber, weil es keine Gesetzgebung ist. Also, du willst nicht nur etwas sagen, du musst wirklich die Sprache hineinfügen, was du versuchen willst. Wenn es einen Preis gibt, leg ein Bestimmen für den Preis. Im nächsten Slime zeigen wir dir, wie du das machst. Und die Quelle der Mittel. Und es gibt einige Optionen. Wer wird es zuständig sein? Wenn es Geld ist, dann wer wird es kontrollieren? Wenn es eine Gesetzgebung ist, wer wird es umsetzen? Und dann, sehr wichtig, ende dein Artikel oder nehme irgendeine andere Aktion, die es dazu hat. Diese Phrase lässt die Botschaft, die eine spezifische Aktion ist, die du zur Town Meeting bringst, ein wenig anders sein, als was du in dem Waren hast. Also, wenn nach den Zuhörungen jemand eine Veränderung suggeriert, oder jemand suggeriert, ich denke, wir brauchen ein extra $1000, du kannst die Gelder ändern, du kannst es ein bisschen massageen, wenn der Moderator mit dir stimmt, dass es im Bereich der Originalartikel ist. Und wie diese Entscheidung getroffen wird. Und nicht jeder Moderator stimmt immer darüber. Ich werde ehrlich sein darüber. Ich weiß, ich habe in ein paar anderen Gemeinden gearbeitet. Einige Moderator, sie lassen keine Veränderungen. Einige Gemeinden lassen die Gelder sinken, sie lassen die Gelder hoch. Konrad lässt die Gelder in beide Richtungen gehen, innerhalb der Reason. Reason ist nicht definiert. Einige Menschen sagen, plus oder minus 10%. Ich weiß nicht, woher das Nummer stammt. Aber jemand hat das recently gelesen, und ich habe das nie gehört. In vier Jahren habe ich das gearbeitet. Aber ich weiß, dass du irgendwie weißt, wann es zu viel ist. Und das ist wirklich, die Frage ist, ob der Allgemeine, während du den Waren liest, fairer Erkennung gegeben hat, was du tun wolltest. Also, vielleicht würden sie nicht auf dem Bildschirm kommen und schreien. Es waren $10,000. Aber wenn du $100,000 für etwas spenden würdest, würden sie auf dem Bildschirm kommen und schreien. Jetzt konstruieren wir es. Dies ist ein echter Beispiel, ein paar Jahre vorher. Ein Flugzeugzugsflugzeug. Dies ist, wie es im Waren erschienen ist. Und du merkst, dass es einige Optionen hier gibt. Und ich werde es line by line deconstructieren. Du gibst es kein Nummer. Die Wahlräte entscheiden die Ordnung, und sie geben es ein Nummer. Also, du startest mit, ob die Stadt wählen wird. Um eine entsprechende, dies gibt dir drei Optionen für die Quelle der Gelder. Um eine entsprechende, was das eigentlich bedeutet, um zu addieren zu deinen Steuern. Oder es aus den available funds in the treasury zu transferieren. Das wäre, die Gelder aus freien Hand. Freie Hand bedeutet Geld, das unbesaget ist. Wir haben es im Banken, aber wir haben es noch nicht umsetzen. Oder die Stadttreffer mit der Erlaubnis der Wahlräte, um Geld zu kassieren. Also, das würde uns Geld erlauben. Also, dies sind drei Optionen, die sie gegeben haben. In dem Artikel kannst du die drei Optionen haben. Wenn wir zu der Botschaft kommen, hast du besser gewählt, welche dieser Optionen. Und was vielleicht hilft, du hast in deinem, ist es in dem Paket? Dieses eine Teil?
Ja.
Du könntest mit folgen, aber du hast das. Auf der Spitze hast du den Artikel. Im Mittelpunkt ist die kleine Erklärung. Und am Boden ist die tatsächliche Botschaft, die für diesen Artikel getroffen wurde. Die nächste Linie, wenn es um Kassieren geht, dann musst du referenzieren, welche Sektion der Allgemeinlage dir zugibt, Geld zu kassieren. In Massachusetts kannst du nur Geld für spezifische, zugestellte Gründe kassieren. Wenn es nicht auf der Liste der Optionen ist, dann wird der Landesverwaltungspräsident generell das vorstellen. Generell, bevor es zu diesem Punkt kommt, wird der Landesverwaltungspräsident sagen, das ist nicht zugestellte Kassieren. In diesem Fall sagt der Artikel, die Summe von 900.000 oder irgendeiner anderen Summe. Diese Phrase, oder irgendeine andere Summe, lässt dich in deine Botschaft an der Town Meeting hoch oder runter gehen. Eine Sache, für die wir viele Kritik über die Jahre gehört haben. Die Menschen sagen, du fragst uns, dir eine Blattkarte zu geben, weil du diese Phrase oder irgendeine andere Summe hast. Sie sehen $1 Million oder irgendeine andere Summe im Waren. Wenn du zur Town Meeting kommst, wird die tatsächliche, spezifische Summe dort sein. Diese Phrase oder irgendeine andere Summe wird ausgegeben. Und dann, was willst du die Gelder für? Für die Kaufung des Flugzeugs und allen notwendigen Geräten. Wer spendet das Geld? Setzt die Mittel in eine Richtung, die der Landesverwaltungspräsident hat. Und dann endet du immer oder nimmst eine andere Aktion, die es dazu hat. Also, das erlaubt jede Veränderung, die du zwischen Januar, wenn der Waren schließt, und April, wenn die Town Meeting passiert. Das gibt dir die Freiheit, das zu tun. Und manchmal nach öffentlichen Zuhörungen, nachdem du mit Stoff oder Vertreter der Komitee gesprochen hast. or input from the league or citizens, you will want to make some changes. This, I don't, we don't have a slide on, but if you look at your handout, you'll see the things that were changed. We, in the actual one, we're not raising the money from taxes, but we are going to appropriate it and we're borrowing. So they chose, they narrowed down that language. They added, "after necessary related equipment." They said, "and other costs incidental and related thereto." That was a phrase I suspect the town council added, making sure that, you know, you could tack on some of the costs of going on to bid or any other of the equipment that you needed. And the sum, and the phrase, "or any other sum," is obviously eliminated. And that phrase, "or the end," the motion does not include or take any other action because you don't, town meeting does not want to give you the freedom to do anything because there's going to be specific action taken.
Any questions on?
Yes.
So with the warrant article, so the motion made at town meeting, in the warrant, there's this box that is the explanation. Is the explanation officially adopted also? Or is that just a help, like those things?
No, the two parts that are not officially adopted are the title and the explanation.
Okay.
The explanation, they ask it to be brief. Sometimes the explanation that's written at the time of the warrant in January, if the motion is going to be different, sometimes the explanation is outdated by the time April comes along. So sometimes in the FinCom report, the explanation might be slightly revised, but sometimes it isn't. So you really have to be careful. It's relevant in January, might not be, the explanation might not be relevant in April. But that is not officially adopted. The actual motion is what's, is the only thing that is counted in the vote, and that's what the town clerk will report.
Okay, so you've written your warrant article. See how easy that was? So now, what's the next step? The town meeting preview meeting, that you have that number for, is a very valuable and important first step. It is hosted by the select board. As I said, it's held on December second at eight thirty a.m. And it is a place for people who have ideas to propose. They are committees, they are individuals, they may be departments as well. And they are scheduled, you call, I think, you call the select board office and get scheduled for that. And then you talk about your idea. The select board, and I just listened to last year's. It is on CCTV on demand. It is very interesting. It is such a useful tool for people to learn about the fiscal climate of the town, what the select board is thinking of, what the town manager is thinking of for ideas, what is the state of the schools. And then, any petitioners who have ideas. And so the people will have a brief period to talk about their ideas, and then they will get feedback. And you make connections there. It's a great networking opportunity. People will ask questions that can lead to more homework that you need to do. Or they will suggest which department or which board you need to talk to next. So it's a very good tool. And with that, I will also remind you that the town meeting calendar is a very useful tool because there are deadlines that you need to be mindful of to make sure that you get that, your petition article, if that's the route you want to go. Or you get your idea to a board or committee early enough that they have time to get it onto the warrant.
Kari, could you give us the language to look up last year's? What did you do for a search?
I went to CCTV on demand. And then I put in coordination meeting because I think at that point, they were calling it coordination or preview meeting.
What was the time for that December second meeting?
It starts at eight, eight thirty.
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, Saturday morning.
Saturday morning?
Yes.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, in the townhouse hearing room. So who weighs in on what? When you start thinking about, who do you go to? You've got all kinds of different ideas. Budgets, zoning bylaws, regular bylaws, land acquisition. There are a lot of potential people that you need to talk to. For instance, finance committee deals with money matters, we know that. While the planning board proposes amendments to zoning bylaws and weighs in on street acceptances and zoning maps as well. General bylaws will depend on the subject matter. And the select board, of course, weighs in on everything because they're the ones that are deciding on what articles are included on the warrant. So again, to give you a better sense of which committees deal with what, the committee descriptions, which is the last part of your packet, has a little explanation of all those standing committees, the more permanent committees, and what they're responsible for. So you can have an idea. Or you can call the select board office, or you can call the town clerk's office if you have an idea and you're not sure where to take it. So I can't stress enough the value of staff and committee input as you craft your warrant article. You want to make sure that the language of your warrant article gets to the heart of the matter that you want to accomplish. And Anita went over a lot of that. Every word matters. Things like the effective date of your warrant article will sometimes depend on what needs to happen after town meeting. For instance, a bylaw goes into effect after it's been approved by the attorney general, who can take up to ninety days to approve it, and then it has to be posted. So to say the effective date will be the day after town meeting is unrealistic. So depending on the idea, you want to make sure that you communicate about that idea, and you can learn about how to craft your article. Other changes may need to take practical implementation into consideration. The cost, who is affected, when will funds be available, and how quickly can compliance be assured? And committees or staff can help clarify those points. A committee may ultimately decide that they want to sponsor your idea, which is great because then they're the ones that are taking it to the public hearings. They're the ones that are speaking to it at town meeting. So how do you get committee support? You want to, once you know which committee is going to be the one that is most affected by your warrant article, you want to get yourself in front of them. You want to talk to the chair or the staff person for that committee and ask to be scheduled on their agenda. And be prepared to answer questions, the questions that Anita talked about earlier. What will it accomplish? What will it cost? And so on. And get ready for feedback. Some of it will be encouraging, and some may leave you feeling deflated. But remember not to take it personally. You want to continue advocating for what you want to accomplish. So be open to suggestions. Remember that, like you, the committees are trying to do what's best for the town. And as your article was discussed, it may evolve to incorporate or eliminate aspects that may not be legal or practical. But ultimately, it's up to you to decide if you want to change anything because at this point, it's still your idea. Remember that there are many ways to reach an outcome. Be willing to negotiate the path, if not the direction. So committee sponsor, whoops, or committee support. If a committee sponsors it, it becomes their article. They decide on the final language, and they make the presentation at public hearings and at town meeting. Committee support means that there's still a degree of worship that someone who is putting forward the idea will be responsible for. If the committee, the committee may also actually speak against your idea if they make recommendations for changes that you decide not to adopt. Because remember, it's your idea until you give it to them. So if your warrant article isn't sponsored by a committee.
Can I say?
Yes.
If it's just sponsorship by some individual. What about the hearing aspect? Have you had any hearings in that case?
So if the committee decides that it's an idea that they are ready to sponsor, it's part of their charge, and it falls within.
Then they have hearings.
Then they would be the one, the town meeting has, there are specific hearings for financial articles, there are five hearings. And so the board, the sponsoring board will be responsible for bringing that to the hearing and speaking to it. That doesn't mean you can't go. Public hearings are public. But they will take responsibility and doing, you know, whatever additional work or research or finessing the language that needs to happen, they will take responsibility for that. Which may also mean that they change it from what your intent may be or not. So it's a back and forth, and you'll have to see what makes sense. Sometimes, an article will change, and I'm speaking from another community because I haven't really gone through a town meeting here, where there was fear from the petitioner that an article might change. So the committee sponsored an article, and the petitioner put forward an article just because they were sure. So there is, there are all kinds of measures that people can take. So Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Ten, gives a voter the option to petition the selectmen to include articles on the warrant that they may not have chosen to include on their own. And there is a process for that. So there are petition forms that are available at the town clerk's office. I have a slide that actually shows one. They're also available on the town website. And there are deadlines for petition articles, which you need to make sure that you. And I'm not sure who do the petitions. Do they have to come to the town clerk's office or the select board? So they need to be submitted. January fourth, four p.m. is when the warrant closes, and that is the deadline to submit those petition articles.
If you're five minutes late, they will reject you.
Right, they have to, but it's, you know, we deal with that all the time with petitions for election-related things. There is a deadline, and that's the law, and that's the deadline.
A petition article wouldn't relate probably to various committee sponsorship. Is that right?
Right, that would be when you're going it alone because you don't have a committee sponsoring, but you feel like it's really something you want to bring before.
And it's not something that would require a hearing, would it?
Well, it's, what a petition article does is puts the language onto the warrant. And then it goes through the same process that all the other articles on the warrant would go through, which is a public hearing process. That means that the board or committee that may be affected by that will hear it at one of those public hearings, and they will weigh in on it. So you still have to be ready to answer all those questions.
Okay.
So you need to be present at the public hearings because you're the one who's going to be presented. The motion language, the language that will be the vote, can be the same as the petition language, but it doesn't have to be. Like Anita said, you need to have that certain language in there. So you need to be very mindful of what you're putting there. Of course, you need to be present at town meetings. So here is an example of, this is a town meeting, an annual town meeting petition form. There are fifteen lines here, and what we need are signatures from ten Concord voters in order to include an article that would compel the select board to include the article on the warrant. So you want to make sure you get more than that. So you want to name the article, that would go on the petition form. You want to finalize the warrant article language before you start collecting signatures because that is the language that is going on the warrant. Nothing more and nothing less. It cannot be edited by anyone once you have submitted it. It is a record. The voting, so the voter information that you're getting is the voting address of the voter. It must match what we have on file. We cannot certify a signature if it has a different address. Annual town meeting requires ten signatures. So you should get more than ten signatures because sometimes people think they're voters, and they're not. Sometimes, you know, we try reasonably. It says printed name reasonably as registered. So if it's a name that we absolutely cannot identify as somebody who is at that household, we cannot certify that signature. The law does not allow us to do that. So you want to get more than that. For a special town meeting, one that has already been called by the select board, you need a hundred signatures to get an article put on that warrant. And finally, if there is a broad community support for something that you feel compelled to bring to town meeting before an annual town meeting or after an annual town meeting has happened, you need two hundred voters to sign that petition.
To call.
To call the special, right, to call the special town meeting. And that, what that does is it gives the select board time within forty-five days to call that special town meeting.
So think carefully of the date that you submit it. You don't want to give it to the selectman at the beginning of November because then town meeting would have to be called within the next forty-five days, and you've got Thanksgiving and Christmas and Hanukkah. In that forty-five day period, it's going to give, it's going to be awfully tight for the select board to come up with a town meeting date that's going to be well-attended. So I would urge you to, you know, look at a calendar carefully. You can collect your signatures, but think carefully before you turn it in to the select board.
What's the timeframe if it's already a annual town meeting, you know, there's the deadline for a regular warrant article, to call a special town meeting within that? Is there, so a forty-five day limit or what?
So the selectmen have, so, so once they get the petition, they have to call the town meeting within forty-five days? So it's all about the timing of when that petition.
So like last year, when there was the sanctuary welcoming community special town meeting, that had, when that was submitted, that was within the forty-five?
It was. And I remember that was just about when I was retiring. And I remember working with a calendar. And if we wanted the special to be on the second night of the annual town meeting, then we counted back forty-five days, and we only had a couple of day window to submit it. And so that's why I would urge you to, don't be too casual about that. We've gotten stunned, really, a couple of times when the timing was just lousy when someone submitted something. And the town, the special town meeting happened, had to happen like in the middle of July, August, because, you know, couldn't this wait till September?
So there's always a way to present your idea for consideration at town meeting, as you can see. And through thoughtful research, communication, and advocacy, you have a better chance of getting a favorable result at town meeting.
Great, thank you both very much. You always learn something. So what kind of questions do we have? Just something before that last point that was made. If you have an idea for a warrant, talk to somebody. Go to the clerk's office. If you know a selectman, talk to them. If you know somebody in a flame gray, talk to them. Not so much just about the substance of it, but the process, what you're trying to accomplish. Because you're not going to get bushwhacked by missing some dumb date, you know, that we have to pay attention to. Even if the, even if the selectmen or the committee is not, doesn't like your idea, that's not going to stop folks saying, "Well, you know, you got to get this done by this date, and make sure you do this." We don't want to, you know. So if you've got an idea for a warrant article, talk to somebody. It'll be better for the conversation. So what kind of questions do you have?
At the town meeting preview on December second, eight thirty, how long does that last? Is it an all-day thing? Does it keep going?
No, 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 a couple hours. A couple hours, usually done by.
Ten thirty or eleven. Ten-thirty or eleven?
Eleven. Depends, you know, depends on how many warrant articles. You go through the order of what you go through, whether the traditional kind of things, you know, you're looking at budgets and that kind of stuff. My recollection is that petition articles that will be done at the end. Budgets, not that long.
With that December 2nd meeting, do you need to have your petition article drafted? And what do you need to come into that meeting with?
You don't need to have a drafter, an idea.
No, you need to have your idea fleshed out enough so that you can get up and talk about it for three, two, three minutes. You don't necessarily have it in writing, but you need to, to, again, you know, you should probably have a draft that you could refer to. Frequently, that is the first opportunity that other committees will hear, "Oh, someone's thinking about this and that impacts me or that impacts that other committee." And you should caucus before that you finalize the articles so that you can get their input.
Carrie is really right. It's very productive meeting, not only for the folks in the audience, but for the select board and the big committees, schools. It's really helpful because you get a sense for the first time what's coming down the road. So it's, it's a good, it's a good thing. The further along you can be in your thinking and writing, when you get to that meeting, the better off you are. More questions? Yes?
If I wanted to, and we'll just take the issue as presently being much discussed. I wanted to write a warrant article that said that all public land in Concord ought to be free of dogs. Is that a warrant article I can present or is the state the authorizing body? And therefore such an article would not be acceptable. How do I figure that out? To whom do I go and how do I know?
Raise, I don't know the exact answer to the question, but raise the question.
Raise the question.
You know, and it doesn't matter really, let me take your best shot. If that was the issue, I'd call Delia. If that was my idea, I'd call.
Can you explain to everybody who Delia is?
I'm sorry, the Director of Natural Resources. Or I'd call Judy, the Chair of the NRC. And I'd, and I'd start there and they'd, Judy or Delia, I'd say, "No, you got to go," I don't know what they'd say. The town clerk. But go online and see if other towns have done it and what was the authority for it. I'd say, "Under Massachusetts Chapter Nine, Second Nine." I'd give you, I can tell you that's a good question because, you know, we're trying to get this administrative policy put across on access to open space. And we met with Judy's committee, filed a bill, and one of the conservatives.
He was like Judy, the Chair of the Natural Resources.
Sorry to say that, but sorry. And the issue was, well, the NRC has jurisdiction over a lot of this land. So you, you can say what you want, but so we're now to make sure we put down below, in a flip mode, this doesn't impact any land that's controlled by the NRC. They have total jurisdiction according to Massachusetts.
An example of somewhere a couple of years ago, it never actually came to town meeting, but they wanted to ban leaf blowers from Concord. And they come to my office and there's something in the pink in the past few days of, I think.
Newton.
Newton, where it's gotten to be quite controversial. And there, at that point, I did a little research. And three larger communities in Massachusetts had regulations about leaf blowers. You cannot, and the Attorney General, and I looked, when you go online to the Attorney General's office, as Carrie mentioned, it's, you've got a lot of helpful information. Not only do you get the bylaw that was approved, but you generally get a lengthy explanation from the Attorney General on what parts they questioned. And in some cases, you know, this probably isn't enforceable, this section here. And what they said, you cannot outright ban leaf blowers. You can regulate, you know, the hours, the decibels, the locations or whatever. But you can't say, you know, "We're not going to allow."
Leaf blowers.
Leaf blowers. Because, you know, whatever, you know, there are, there are rules against, against some of this stuff. So you do have to be thinking about, you know, banning dogs from all public land. Maybe okay on some portions, but they were going to be hard pressed because the state did contribute some money to some of the land that we bought over the years. And, you know, it's going to have to be someplace where you should bring a dog. Some rules that you can play into place. They may not be allowed here, but they could be allowed there.
And the folks in the clerk's office, they might not know the answer either. We're going to have to call somebody and find out and look it up.
So great.
Supreme Court. And I remember what you guys put for the tax committee, Jay Kies, we'd send it to the attorney and it came back. It was a no-go. We had to go back and duty that again.
Well, there was an eulogy to it.
Sorry?
The pesticide thing for bees, that was also a violation of the law.
Well, I was withdrawn. That article was drawn. It'll be. Yeah.
So you can't outright ban, but can you regulate to absurdity? Can you say that you cannot operate any leaf blower under a hundred pounds?
You can get close to absurdity.
You can just make life very, very difficult for people.
I don't, I don't know the rule, but it would be.
When I looked at samples in other towns, and I think one fun part of the town clerk's office is you have to pretend like you're neutral on all these. Whether, you know, even if you had no connection at all. But, but it was fun sometimes doing some of this research. But the Attorney General in, it was Brookline, Newton and Winchester, or was it their, their community? Maybe Cambridge or there to get, but, you know, they said you could, because this is people's livelihood, you could not outright ban, but you could regulate the hours. Well, the person in Concord who was interested, let's say, she wanted to say no weekend use. And I, I gave, after having read these three decisions from the Attorney General, I said, "I think that would not be allowed." You know, and you can't say no use on Sundays because some people's religious day is Saturday. But you've got to have some hours. You could say not before 10:00 AM or not before 9:00 AM or not after a certain time. But you've got to have some times when, when this would be allowed. So I think, I guess the Attorney General that kind of decides on some of this in terms of, they might say an hour a day would be too much regulation. But it doesn't mean you have to do twelve hours a day.
You could also probably regulate to noise level.
Yes, you definitely can regulate the, and that was the issue, I think, in today's paper.
Yeah.
The decibel level is evidently is lower than the, than the equipment that is currently being used by a lot of these facilities. And it's, so either they have to go out and buy some new equipment or it's going to take them longer to use the lower decibels.
Leaf blowers?
Leaf blowers.
What else?
Yeah, the other, the other question, you were talking about, you know, regulations or surgeries. Always seems to be a question of enforcement, he was going to enforce it. How is that, where do you go and how do you understand that portion of the law?
It's the same process. If this looks like it's a zoning issue, talk to the land. Land Committee, Land Committee, talk to the zoning board and appeals. A good example of that, if we dealt with this last, two years ago, was the polystyrene ban. And it's a good example, it's a complicated bill, but it's a good example of a bill that was really kind of semi-trashed in a public hearing. People were opposed to it and the petitioner was really paying attention. And went about his business, talking to all the people who were opposed to him, coming back and then getting it squared away in the past. But one of the big issues was, how are we going to enforce this? You know, that was a lot of conversation with the town, with the Board of Health, with a lot of folks. So it was a good question that frankly, we didn't know exactly. It was a matter of somebody's getting enforcement into all of our brains and then trying to figure out how to come up with some way to do it. So again, early conversation, you know, and if people are opposed to what you're doing, those are the best people to talk to because that, they're going to really help you figure out where are the real bad parts, if you will, of the particular thing you should worry about or where it's shaky in terms of presenting it. So, you know, don't, don't close those folks out. Talk to them too. These are going to really be very helpful in making the best possible case for your article when you get to town, town meeting. What other questions do you have? Yes?
So in terms of finalizing the language of an article, would the best way to do that be to meet with committees before you write it? Or would it be to, like, is there like a town-provided legal service? To make sure that.
I would, I would, if I was doing it and I had an idea for a warrant, I would probably, unless I knew somebody, I would probably call a town clerk. And I would say, "Look, I'm thinking about this." And she would say to me, "Well, I think this is probably going to fall under the jurisdiction of something or other." And the Chair of that committee is Miss Something. I'd call Miss Something up and ask her if I could talk to her.
And she would probably also be able to give you some samples of, like, or you talked about something similar to that a couple of years ago or, and here's the basic format for it.
I think you'll find if you're new at that, that people are going to be pretty helpful. Last thing, I mean, sometimes things are contentious at town meeting, but you don't want them to be contentious or the confusion. You want them to be, if it's going to be contentious, you want it to be over an issue. So you want to work very hard, have as much clarity of purpose and language as you possibly can so you don't get sidetracked off into an issue that's really not important. So I think people, even if they think it's not such a great idea, are going to try to be as very helpful to you as they can in getting this honed out and structured so that they can get a good hearing. Yep.
So where are the reasonable limits on the amendments for various articles? Like, I remember several years back, I worked on the Play Falsettos and LeAnn Kay had her big thing about having the town, you know, condemn it. And then there was an amendment to it to essentially flip the meaning. And everyone got very confused about what ye, yer name was supposed to be. And I'm wondering how much, how much in advance need to be there and have everything set so the town moderator will allow that sort of thing before the actual town meeting?
I'd say two things. One, let's go to the comments. I would definitely prepare my amendment in writing. And I would definitely contact the moderator as soon as you possibly can to let, in this case, her know that when this article comes up, when you get a chance to speak, you're going to propose amendment and here's what it's going to look like. She can say to you, "Okay." She can say, "This, just, I'm not going to let this in. This is out of order as far as I'm concerned." It's her call. She runs the, the town meeting. So I would make sure you get this done as early as you can, get it in writing and talk to the town moderator. It does get confusing at times at town meeting. And a lot of it has to do with the amendment proposer not really being prepared. And so he says, "Well, I amend this motion to," no color.
Point of order.
We try to eat tea in the back so we can. But then he says it, everybody goes, "What did he say?" And then, "Do you have it in writing? Oh, I just saw it now." So then we have to stop and they have to get her in writing and then they have to get it to somebody who can put it up on a screen. And it gets confusing. So if it's going to be confusing, you know, let's try to. So get to the moderator, get early. I've even let the proposer know you're going to do it. I, if I was going to make an amendment, I would, maybe not in this particular case, but in general.
And, you know, that one, I was, town clerk that evening, I remember there were, there were a lot of people that said, "Whoa, did the moderator rule that this was within the scope of that original warrant article?" And, and, and he did. And his explanation of that was, "Were people given adequate notice that we were going to talk about the Play Falsettos that night?" And clearly they weren't. And whether you're condemning it or praising the people who were responsible for putting it on was somewhat irrelevant to whether you were going to be attending or not attending because both sides were going to be in attendance. And I think that was why he made that call.
Thank you. Your name there.
There's no way to stop somebody from adding an amendment to your.
Right. Unless it's nuts. I mean. We have a little, a slight amount of little nuts button on it. The moderator could rule it out of order. If you're, if, if, the article was, "We're going to spend $10,000 to paint the streets blue." And you come in and propose a million dollars, then the moderator is going to tell you to get lost. So it's her decision as to whether or not your amendment still is consistent enough with the meaning of the original article so the public would have been informed about it. Because what she can't allow is to come in and, "We're going to talk about cats" and then we start talking about parakeets. You can't do that. That's not consistent, right? So that, it's her call. And again, that's why you get to her early. She can say, "Nope, you got to tighten it up. Do whatever you have to do to make it legit."
And on the, "Don't reinvent the wheel" point, we in Concord like to think we are at the vanguard and the first in the nation or the first in the world to come up with certain topics. How has that played out in the past when we were indeed the first and certainly in Massachusetts to tackle something?
The only one that I can think of that really were the first first was the water bottle ban. And, but the others, you know, with a little time and effort, we found other samples. There were the one for plastic bags a few years ago. There were half a dozen communities in Massachusetts who had at least tried it. And in drawing together the language, and I had worked with the petitioner on that, and drawing together the language, we actually looked at the five or six samples of the other communities and all of the Attorney General's comments about them. And there were some things, well, I, you know, the Attorney General would say, "You can't put that language or you can't put that language." But others, they let it go, but they said, "I don't think this is probably enforceable and this would be okay." And so we took the best of everybody and created one. And then when I sent it into the Attorney General, you know, it was with a cute little cover note saying, "I pulled only the best parts of the ones you've already approved." And she approved it like that.
Two per comments. Google is really, really helpful in finding this out. However, I would, I think everybody understood what was meant when both of you talked about "don't reinvent the wheel." But it doesn't mean that something that we talked about two or three years ago can't come back to town meeting again. Circumstances change, people's perspective change. So it could be something that town has talked about before. I think what we mean by that is, you know, if the town has dealt with it and dealt with it reasonably decisively, you know, don't think you're just going to come back and get the town to change its mind tomorrow. This is not, how many times can you get a vote before you get to vote your one kind of game? But there's nothing wrong with bringing somebody back to town meeting that, you know, where something has changed a little bit and their circumstances are different, so.
Well, it took about, you know, three years.
Yeah. So, so, you know, that's all we may know to, Mrs. Hill just passed away. I thought we were responsible for bringing that to the town meeting. So it's a sad note for the town. Other questions? Yes, Ben?
If you don't like how an agency is doing its job, and you think in a better way how what they can do, like have a rate hearing when they're supposed to have a rate hearing, but they don't.
As long as it's not the selectmen that you're talking about.
I'll just like this. If that's the case, does it have to be a bylaw change or is there some other phrasing for that type of article? When you want to change a discretionary act of an agency in a certain direction?
I don't know the answer, but I would say the following. Some agencies in town are, have responsibilities or statute. So you may not. So you may not like it, they might not like it, but they have to abide by certain regulations and laws in the commonwealth. If it's just their practice-
Which the circumstance of thinking about is, it's their practice.
I would bring it to the attention of the Chair of the committee. And I would, I would bring it to the committee formally, I would like the committee, and say, I don't think this is such a good idea. And ask if you could talk about it at a committee meeting. Do people come to select board like that? Frequency.
And the select board has the appointing authority of many committees.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. But if it's a statutory thing, there may not be much they could do about it either. I think of a light plant, that's also statutory responsibility. The NRC has statutory planning, zoning board, those all have statutory rules. Yes, ma'am?
I'm curious about the funding. Last night, at the Mother's Out Front, had a terrific meeting at the First Parish Church.
On the gas leak, right?
Oh, yes, on gas leak, yeah. It was just, it was really, it was professional, it was crisp, it was an outstanding meeting. One of the, there was a fairly sizable contingent of folks there from Acton, where apparently, there's, there are many more gas leaks than Concord sufferers. But they, and we have enough, you know, right here in our own community. Acton set about to actually figure out where they all were through a series of devices that the state can use. You know, that means that a town can use. And they mapped the entire, the entire geography of Acton, so they know where every single problem is. In Concord, we're a little less clear where all the problems are, and we've not allocated funding to be able to map all of that. So let's say, after that meeting, I decided, well, I'd like to have an article in which I ask that we appropriate funds to do massive research on the town of Concord, and find every one of those gas leaks, and figure out what level they are, and then encourage, you know, encourage the gas people to take care of those concerns. That would cost money.
Probably.
And, as a matter of fact, it would cost about $50,000.
It do have to cost money, too.
Right, it does. So, so having determined that, I write my bill, I do the research, I mean, my article, I do the research, I figure out how much it's going to cost. But then the town has its own budget, and its own budgetary projections and anticipations. How, who decides whether in the end, is it just by legislative vote by the citizens, that we're going to spend that money? That $50,000 dollars?
Does FinCom fit in that?
Does FinCom fit, is that what we're thinking?
Okay, so do you understand the question? So if a warrant article has a-
So I'm just curious how you go about something like that.
A financial cost about it.
Well, maybe the state could help.
How do you figure out how the cost will be funded?
Right.
Okay, so we had a slide about that, the way you can fund things, is it can be funded through essentially our tax bills.
Right.
And then that would go to the FinCom to see if it could be within the guideline or not. You could propose borrowing, you could propose using what was euphemistically referred to as free cash. That is already accumulated funds that have not been appropriated. And while we're doing that, I've talked to the town manager, and I find out, is this something the light plant would be interested in doing? With the town meeting, who would be, was there be anybody interested in doing that? And see what they would say about it, and then work with the appropriate, find out what the appropriate funding. Something very modest might be able, like I'd say $50,000 is a lot on the one hand, but in a kind of budget for the whole town, it's modest. It might fit into some budget. Could it fit into the light plant budget? Could it fit into the town manager's budget? Would the FinCom be willing to include that as part of the levy limit that we're going to raise? Maybe no.
Couldn't a gas company be partly responsible for that?
They won't.
They don't, they are not responsible. They're responsible for repairing, I don't want to go further than what I know. But they would be responsible for repairing a dramatic leak.
Anything that they view as potentially dangerous, they'll fix.
That's called another one.
Their point is, their point of view is that these gas leaks are not, they pose no dangers to the public, either health or- And I think Mother's Out Front's point is, okay, but still costing so many money, and it didn't use. So I, that's the way I do it. I don't know how that one would work out. It could be a free cash.
It would seem to be a good example, given the level of both attendance and interest in the question.
Something much more than that, if you were talking, if you added a zero to it, right? Then I know, I don't know, but I would suspect the town manager would say, I can't do that in my budget. And so it would have to be expressly included in the levy limit by the finance committee, or it would have to be some kind of borrowing, or some kind of allocation from free cash.
If the, so just one, so if the town were to pass it, and the town manager said, I, I can't do it. And FinCom said, oh, wait, we can't, we can't do that, it's not within our budgetary constraints. And no one was willing to go out and borrow the money, because who does that?
The jail would do it.
Oh, good.
Well, remember, remember what we heard earlier. In the article that you're proposing for the warrant, it doesn't need to say how it will be financed. It needs to say it's going to be $50,000 or some other sum. And it could be financed by blah, 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 blah. So that's what you need to get in the warrant article. And then, once you've got that in place, then that gives you the time to work on the actual funding. So when you come to town meeting then, that's going to say, from free cash, or borrowing, or whatever it's going to say. But you've got the time, so the warrant article, you don't have to have that problem solved, to have a word accepted. There was a question, ma'am?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. I was at that meeting as well, and Professor Phillips, or Dr. Phillips, had stated that the first fix is to start with the biggest gas leaks. And we have 125 gas leaks, supposedly, in Concord. And one of the biggest gas leaks is on Commonwealth Ave. And Dr. Phillips had said that it's 100, we have 120 times more pressure than Boston. So if we have that much more pressure, we have that much more devastation if we should have an explosion. So if that's true, what he said, so I'd just like to know, they said there's this Pecari, Pecaro survey by the state, and it, it shows some mapping, gas mapping. But this, I was also surprised that Commonwealth pipes have been there since 1882. And they corrode, and eventually, they'll explode. So, I mean, this is something that we should be aware of.
Eventually explode, there may be a larger leak of some kind.
Yes, but eventually, something can happen. So I was wondering how vital, if, it sounds logical to start with the biggest leaks first. And the only way to find out is to do that mapping, which, as that woman had stated, there was some people from Acton commenting that they had that survey done, and we can do the same.
Sure.
And is as a preventive measure, just like we do for health.
Sounds like a warrant article made.
You can see what other towns have done.
And we see the town manager has joined us, and I can use his name. Other questions? Yes?
So you don't have to have the motion language finalized when you submit a warrant?
Correct. And Anita specifically showed you the kind of parts of it that are purposely not necessarily cast in Concord. Because even though you think you know what you're going to be doing, it's like a few months between when you're doing it and town meeting, and stuff happens, I've heard.
If there are more questions?
One more, one more question.
No, I was going to thank you.
One more.
The, the information about the various constituent parks that turn to an article, is that up on the website somewhere? In case I lose my handy name, Beckett.
It will be.
It will be.
It will be.
Yes.
And if it's not, call the town board.
Get it on the town meeting. Thank you, all of you, so much, it's been so helpful. The most exciting part of this, besides the Christmas and the fun of the program, is it's all being recorded. And it's will be available for everyone for a long period of time, so that if people couldn't make this meeting, that they have questions about how to do this, and you have friends who are thinking about this, they can refer to CCTV, which has captured all of this for us. If you can't quite remember what was said, you can go back, look for it. I cannot thank you all enough for coming, this is a great deal for all of us. Thank you.